Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 work session for the City Council of the Community of the Year. First, I'd like to just thank everyone who went to the State of the City event today. It was a sold-out event, great celebration of amazing progress by a lot of people working in the same direction and really setting a higher standard for ourselves and for others. So, thank you to everyone for all your hard work. It's always fun to share our story with the rest of the region. All right, first thing on our agenda is a presentation by the Corridor MPO regarding Safe Routes to School. Hi Kesha.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Kesha Billings with the Planning Department. I would like to take a moment to express my support for Safe Routes to School and just acknowledge that there are a number of meetings, discussions, emails, more discussions had by a number of staff, council member, mentor, and then just the planning and coordination that went into this was a great effort by a number of, by the school district, the MPO and city staff. So with that, I will introduce Roman Kiefer with the MPO. He's going to present to you the Safe Routes to School Plan for the Linmar Community School District that will be on the agenda for approval on Thursday.
Thank you Kesha for the introduction and thank you Council and the Mayor for having the opportunity to speak about the Linmar Safe Routes to School Plan today. So just to kind of provide the intent and purpose of what Safe Routes to School is, is I provided a definition from the United States Department of Transportation. This says Safe Routes to School is an approach that promotes walking and biking to school through infrastructure improvements, enforcement, tools, safety education, and incentives to encourage walking and biking to school. And then also to preface kind of the Linmar Safe Routes to School Plan, I also wanted to provide some history about Marion and its impact with Safe Routes to School within its own community. So in 2017, the Marion Independent School District adopted a Safe Routes to School Plan for the Marion Independent School District. Once that was adopted, we got some feedback from Linmar community members that were interested in having a Safe Routes to School Plan for their area up north. And so with that, in 2020, the Linmar Safe Routes to School Plan efforts started, as you all probably know, is that 2020 wasn't the best year to start planning efforts, especially with schools with going remote. So that was kind of delayed the process here a bit. So the schools included with this plan are the Echo Hill Elementary School, the Hazel Point Intermediate School, the Boulder Peak Intermediate School, and the Oak Ridge Middle School. For Safe Routes to School, as a side note, is that only elementary schools up to middle schools are allowed, or not allowed, but are within the planning efforts for this. And then just to help define where these schools are, is that they are on the northwest side on Albernatt Road, kind of on that Linmar campus there, and then on the northeast side of town on 35th with Boulder Peak. These schools also kind of have a unique situation with each other, with relation with all of them in the sense that they are on the outline development areas of the city. So they all share a common distinction of not being completely developed around. So once we got the schools defined, is that we then started the community planning process. This planning process incorporated a steering committee. The steering committee was made up of MPO staff, City of Marion staff, Marion council member, and then also Lynn County Public Health and the Iowa Bicycle Coalition. And then through this planning process, as we did, community outreach, one of those ways was parent and student surveys at all four schools, and we also did student observations. This would be MPO staff and the Linmar Community School District. What this allowed us to see is what is actually going on in the ground versus kind of what we're just hearing. And then at the very end of the planning processes, that we started to table at community events to make sure that the document that we've kind of drafted and gotten all the data into matched what the community was looking for. So within this plan is that there's about six categories for action items. These action items categories would be engineering, evaluation, education, equity, encouragement, and engagement. And then from this plan, we pulled about the top three, I shouldn't say top three, but three good examples within each of these categories. So within engineering, we have improving crosswalks close to the schools, tree planting within the right-of-way, implementing multimodal accommodations, so bike lanes, sidewalks, those kinds of accommodations there. Evaluation, so gather data annually, and then an annual committee meeting to make sure that we're on par with our progress, and then use active transportation traffic modeling, so see kind of our forecast, how many students might be walking and biking to school in the future. For education, we have creating educational materials for students and parents, how to safely walk and bike to school, but also other factors like speeding. We also have teaching students how to use active transportation. Not all students know how to ride a bike or even walk through some infrastructure that is new to all of us like roundabouts. So providing those educational materials to students are vital. And then creating educational materials to promote safety, so safely crossing the roadway and whatnot. And then with equity is identifying areas or street trees so that students aren't in the blistering heat in the starting and end of the school year. And then ensure students have items for active transportation, good walking shoes, helmets and whatnot. And then also conduct a walk audit. So almost all infrastructure in Marion is up to ADA par, which is making sure that it's safe and good to use for students all throughout. And then with encouragement, we have create incentives for active transportation. This would be up to the school district to figure out, because could be in a form of a tree or whatnot, and then ensure students have spaces to store active transportation items. So if you're coming to school, it might be a disincentive to have your helmet taken up your locker and lug your bag around with you. And then next, we create walking and biking school buses, so providing an opportunity for people to walk and bike together and have that sense of community to get to and from school. And then engagement, have parent champions, so have that really community grassroots focus, and have the community lead this program, and then community comments on walking routes. So making sure that when we create these walking routes, it's in the good mindset of the students will actually use them and they might not use certain walking routes due to, there might be a sidewalk panel that, you know, might be misaligned or whatnot. And then provide information about construction projects. The City of Marion is really good about having an engineering newsletter every couple of weeks, I believe, to get knowledge out there about those construction projects, but making sure that it goes to the student to make sure that they know that, you know, they might not be able to walk through a roundabout to school and create an alternative route for however long they need to in a safe manner. And then for the status of the plan, kind of where it's currently at, is that it was adopted by the Linmar School Board on February 26th, and then it's seeking adoption at Marion City Council on the meeting this Thursday. With that, I want to thank you for the presentation and having to answer any questions.
Questions? Go ahead.
I warned Roman I had a question, but now I'm really second guessing whether it's for you or perhaps Kesha. And Kesha, you and I, I think, have talked about this before. I think my fundamental question is, is I know that there's sidewalk infill pending for essentially northeast of Indian Creek School. And I didn't see Indian Creek School cited as a target as part of this plan. And my other fundamental question is, at such point, will Excelsior Middle School be included in the plan? And I guess I'm just, I just am kind of curious, those seem to be a couple of gaps relative to the others that were specified in the overall plan.
Yeah, so kind of with the scope of this plan, it was for those four schools. So we have Indian Creek, which is a different school, kind of without, outside of the scope of this plan. And then Excelsior would also be outside of the scope of this plan. But for those discussions with internal staff, I think that'd be internal. It's happening here, Kesha, behind me.
Yep, and I'll add a little bit of how we got there. So Marion Independent, right, we were able to do the entire school district because of the geographical size of the school district. So, but the reality of doing the entire Linmar School District, you know, at one point, we had to like shave off some of what was, what was doable for MPO staff, our committee, to really look at for that. And so, yeah, as Roman said, the focus was on kind of the northwest part of town, that little campus that's there, if you say. And then Boulder Peak was selected because it was that newer school of how can we look at the, one of the newest schools that we have and focus on that. So Indian Creek, you're right, I mean, Indian Creek and Excelsior were left off of that, but that was kind of with intention and trying to keep the plan at a manageable stage. That's not that we wouldn't pursue that in future planning efforts, but I don't know that we'd anticipate an expansion to this plan per se.
I can jump in here, Grant, because there are kind of two plans in the way that, the approach to them. And when the consultants and others who are helping us with this came through on the Marion one, it was very, very unique to be able to do the whole district. So unfortunately, it kind of set up a expectation that the plan, a plan like that, a plan, Safe Routes to School Plan would be district-wise, when usually it's, actually, it's usually just one building, not even, as far as it's gone with Linmar, with having four buildings. And at the time, Boulder Peak, because we're going way back before COVID, because that really kind of cut this off. It has delayed it for longer than probably we would have liked. So when we were looking at it, and we learned this when we were doing Marion with Longfellow, coming in when they're building the school helped us make some corrections to the plans of the school on those new campuses and entrances and how things were working. So we were hoping between Boulder Peak that we were anticipating ahead of time and then planning for the development around it based on that building being there and ensuring that there are safe travel plans to that school as the neighborhoods grew up. On the northwest campus, with having those three buildings there, the problem that is occurring is there is only one road into the one campus. So we're having, we were having issues where cars were backing up onto the road, keeping people from being able to get into neighborhoods, which also meant they couldn't get any safety equipment in if there had been a fire during times where people were lined up. So we were seeing problems beyond the sidewalk issue and some of the issues we were seeing at Indian Creek going in. And the hope would be that that would be a next level plan to it, that the district itself has now has a plan put together in how to, what type of communication you do, what kind of pre-planning, because we, there's a lot, it's more than just kind of the sidewalks. It's, you have, there's a lot of assessment into how do you get to school? There's counts on counting the kids walking and how many are walking, how many are biking on random days? And then the schools have to go back out and find out from parents why they don't, or what are their plans? So this gives a template for not only our help, but for the district to then take that to the next step in understanding for the other buildings where they want to identify those next plans to be in Excelsior, because we all know the problems that are occurring with changes in busing and the same with Indian Creek. And we've also now seen it with Wilkins.
Well, and as you described, some of the other considerations that have gone into all of this planning, I would have to say, one of our other favorite topics is Tower Terrace, right? And also the continued development that's going on on, I forget the new street name, Mike, it used to be Indian Creek.
Wallace.
Wallace, yes, the new development that's going into Wallace. It just seems to me that that will propel some corrections to at least the gaps I see for Excelsior and Indian Creek, just because of that activity too, which may precede a revision to this particular plan in the future. So I just wanted to illuminate this as, I think that's just a gap in the overall plan, but it may be self-healing here in the, in the future. Dave?
Yeah, you introduced it, teed it up really well. I am going to do a presentation here in the near future, when there's not a thousand presentations on the agenda, on the sidewalk gaps in the community, I've kind of identified all of our missing one-offs. I've identified some neighborhoods that are probably older and more, have more boys than they should, and then just some, some bigger gaps overall, and I'll be bringing that in the near future. I'm not sure, I can't give you an exact date yet, but that'll be addressing that Indian Creek question like you just had, the gaps there and a few others around the community, so.
Well, thanks for indulging me on this for a little bit. I just, you know, since I've become a Ward Two representative, and I was looking to volley this, these questions I was getting from my neighborhood to Steve, but he's not Ward Two anymore. It just kind of heightened my sensitivity to the whole matter and caused me to have a focus on it, so thanks.
Sue?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The other, there's another component to, I mean, there's a, part of the component that we, then this was part of Blue Zones Project and Be Well that we worked with on Indian Creek to deal with the sidewalks. And it's some of the discussion the committee has had with the Linmar leadership as well. And that's how can we work with the parent groups, because we did walking school buses for Indian Creek at that time, and we had volunteers that were involved with us, high school kids as well, but we always had adults and parents that were the driver of the bus and the back of the bus and keeping everybody in between. And those are all types of programs that we have offered to help organize or instruct with the different buildings, if that is of interest with some of the challenges they're facing with the sidewalks and the more kids walking and biking to school with the, without having the busing. So there's also some group organization within buildings that we could be doing to help families that are part of this plan as well. And there's also bike rodeos, we went working with the SROs on with the kids and looking at those gaps too. And Ryan's got something he wants to add.
I was just going to add, Councilman, that we did have a kickoff meeting with both Marion Independent and Linmar to go through just introductions, and as Linmar's Safe Routes to School Plan is getting adopted, let them know that, you know, they have a resource with Marion Independent, they've gone through this, they've got, they've got some intel that they can share. So really kind of, Mayor, you talked about collaboration at the State of the City, so really just bringing the two entities together in the city to go through and have regular meetings where we continue to work on what's next, what can we do? As Councilwoman Spencer was mentioning, different programs that, you know, who are the champions at the different sites? And what can they do and how can they better educate and get engaged? So this is, this is the beginning and we'll, we'll continue to evolve it as we move forward.
Thanks. Sarah, you should really study up on the topics, you can be more conversational.
Well, there's a great, they, we have a great team. That's why you all hear too much about this stuff from me, but, you know, you really see the differences it makes and how important it is, and you all have put a lot of time and energy to this, and it sounds like it's a simple thing, but when you get back a book, the stick that's got all the statistics and maps and pieces and components to it, it's just, it's a much deeper project than it can, and sound. And we're all, already when you talked about Marion, we're already at the point now where that's a reassessed, like, that's almost lived its life to the point of we have to either take it out or start over. Yeah, and that's working too, so you can see the value of it.
My question is, once it's adopted by council, what's, what's next? Like, what happens then, once it becomes an adopted plan?
So within the plan, there's an action items segment in there, and it has a timeframe for those projects. So once it's adopted, is that then the City of Marion would be working towards those time?
So it's not going to sit on a shelf somewhere, it's going to, it's going to be implemented?
Yeah. And then we'll be also having, I think we're going to be moving to a two-year, or twice a year, meeting to make sure that we're on par with all our action items and moving it forward.
And does, does funding come through the MPO or a part of it?
So historically, the MPO has funded Safe Routes to School projects. We don't do so anymore due to Iowa Department of Transportation request. That funding is now at the state level.
Okay. Do we?
And for example, we applied to the state last fall. We haven't heard back yet for Safe Routes to School funding for sidewalk gap infill in the Marion Independent School District. So again, through the state, that would be with approval of council or individual projects through the state for outside funding. Otherwise, it would be local.
Well, this is great work, and I agree, there's more to be done, there's always more to be done, but this is a great start. So thank you for your time and your work. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next item is a presentation and update on the Status of Wastewater Treatment Agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids. Mr. Barcalow.
Yeah, so I'm going to kick us off here. I got a team from Cedar Rapids here, we got Lauren and Troy, and Dave is sitting down in case we, we need him as well. But this is kind of the checkpoints that we're having with our community partners to come in and present on how things are going. So I'm going to hand it over to them, let them give the presentation and help out if I need to.
Thanks, Mike. I'm Roy Hesman, I'm the Utilities Director with the City of Cedar Rapids. I have Lauren O'Neil, our WPC plant manager, along with us today. And it's been about a year since we were here last to talk about our 2080 agreement and our capacity agreements that we were incorporating into that 2080 agreement. So we just wanted to come back, we've been working with Ryan and Kim and Mike, as well as staff from Hiawatha on this 2080 agreement update. So we really just wanted to bring you, the council, up to speed on where we're at and get everyone kind of up to date and informed of where this is headed to. So, let's go on. So just a little brief history first. This is a very early picture of WPC. The plant was built in the late seventies, put online in 1980. It's out along Otis Road, just west of Highway 13. This is actually not a really early, because the roughing filters are domed at this point. So this is, is kind of midlife of the plant. So it was put online, it serves not only all of Cedar Rapids, but Marion, Hiawatha, Robbins, Palo, and a little bit of Lynn County. So the population base that this plant serves is about 180,000 people. But with the loadings that are going to this plant, it actually treats a loading of about the equivalent of 1.8 million people. So it's a very unique facility throughout the country because of that high-strength loading that comes to the plant. And if anyone remembers this, less than stellar day in 2008 when we had the flood, this is what the facility looked like. And it took us about six years to get the plant really back into good operational capacity. We did, we did temporary repairs very quickly, but then what were deemed by FEMA as permanent repairs, which we really called a big Band-Aid, took about six years. So it bought us some time, and now we're at the point where, 10 years later, we're needing to do additional renovations and upgrades. So I'm going to turn this over to Lauren, she's going to go into more of the details.
Thank you. Lauren?
All right, so this is just a brief snapshot of some of the future improvements that we're looking at right now. There's several different phases, but this first phase is currently in 100% design. We're planning on, I'll go for the schedule here in a bit, but this is currently in design and we're moving forward with this project right now. This is a $250 million project. We are bringing on a new treatment process that will replace a couple of our processes that are just, they're 40 years old and they're just not quite as efficient, and they're starting to show their age. So we're going to be replacing those with aerobic granular sludge process, which will help lead us into the next steps of nutrient removal. So we'll be removing nitrogen and phosphorus, which leads to gulf hypoxia. And so we're just doing our part to take some of the load off the river. So we'll be coming, be becoming more efficient and bringing a new process into the treatment system. Along with that, we'll be adding anaerobic digestion, which is a process that actually creates a biogas. So while we're doing the process of treating the solids that we create, we get this beneficial use of this biogas. And we plan on cleaning that up to the same quality of gas that you have at your, if you have a gas stove or at your house for your heater. So we would be cleaning that gas up and reinjecting it into the pipeline. So there's some beneficial use there that we can return this biogas that we're making into the system, hopefully generate some revenues for the plant to help keep costs down for the entire area. So quick, a quick little look at the schedule here. So the process began about 2015, but I mean, in reality, it started long before that. But we, we worked with the DNR to get the plan submitted. We've been working with stakeholders such as yourselves to keep you updated as we're going along. We also have been working with industries and just different community partners. We've been heavy on design, this is a $250 million project with lots of parts and pieces. It is a state-of-the-art facility that will be coming to the plant. So it is, it's going to be a really efficient, good next step for, for really the entire area. So there's, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. So we've been working on that for, for several years now. We did the first portion of this project, which we call Contract One, as a quick-hit project to get some of the pieces that weren't, they just weren't going to make it to the end of the full project. So we got a couple of pieces just renovated and working again. And then our new project, the Contract Two, is set to bid here in May. We're very close to finishing up those design documents right now. And then construction will continue through 2027. I'll just keep giving you opportunities to speak here. So as we mentioned, we've been working on the 2080, so as a part of this project, we had been looking at how we bill contributing cities. We've been working with both Marion and Hiawatha primarily to try and address some of the issues we've been seeing, right? Large swings in costs and we've been meeting pretty regularly to try and get everybody's goals in alignment there. So the original 2080 agreement, which is basically just the agreement that says how Marion and Cedar Rapids are going to be working together to get the wastewater treatment paid for, that expires in 2029. We did work on a capacity improvements agreement, which is when we were here last year. That was approved in March of 2023. I'll go into a little bit more detail here in the next couple of slides on what that was. And then more recently, we've been working on the future 2080 agreement. So the current 2080 agreement covers a population equivalent, so of up to 48,000 people. And I say equivalent because sometimes wastewater, if you have industry or if you have light commercial, those kinds of things, they can change what the, what's in the wastewater to make it look a little different. So we're saying an equivalent of 48,000 people, that doesn't necessarily match up with, with the exact population, but that's how we do it in the wastewater world. So that's what the current agreement is, is covered for. Right now, the operational and maintenance costs are distributed to all of our communities on a proportional residential flow. And I would love to tell you how it works, but I promise you, you don't want to hear it. It is a very convoluted, a very fair way of coming up with things, but what ends up happening is that, and you've seen this in the past few years, is that you get these large swings in costs. And we really wanted to address that issue while still maintaining that fairness of paying for the usage. So you'll see that here in the next couple of slides, I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. The capacity agreement, which you approved last year, brought us to a population equivalent of 61,000. So basically, what's that saying? That's saying that you're expecting that your population equivalent or the load that you'll be sending down the wastewater pipes to us is going to be the equivalent of 61,000 people. It doesn't necessarily mean that you'll have a population of 61,000 people, but that's just what the wastewater will look like. So we will take those future plant improvement costs and allocate those costs based on that amount of capacity that you're kind of reserving. So you're saying we want to have this, this load of 61,000? that amount of capacity that you're kind of reserving. So you're saying we want to have this this load of sixty one thousand people. And then we will allocate those costs for the new plant improvements according to that population equivalent.
And I'm just gonna add, those numbers, the sixty one thousand, Kim and and Ryan and and Mike have helped us come up with those numbers based off of future growth expectation. So that's that's where the base numbers came from.
Yep. Thank you for adding that. The the payment plan to to pay for that capital cost expenditure, that won't begin until all of the project is accepted and completed. And we haven't necessarily worked out how that's gonna be paid, but we're working together with Kim and Mike to to make sure that we can get to an agreement that, you know, you guys can afford and and we can help pay back the loan. So. So that's still more to come on on those payment plans. So here are the two largest projects that we will be coming in. Keep in mind, this is a forty year old plant that we are continuing to keep moving. But these are the two large improvement projects that we have on the books. So to be completed in FY twenty seven is the estimated two hundred and fifty million dollar project, or what we were calling Contract Two. And we did estimate the capital contribution, not including interest, as twenty four thou, uh, excuse me, twenty four point five million. And that was just come up with based on Marion's load and the the waste that you would be sending in comparison to the rest of of Cedar Rapids and Hiawatha and and all the contributing cities. So that is the first project. The second project is a main lift project, which would increase our capacity and our ability to bring more wastewater to the treatment plant. And that is estimated at a hundred and thirty million, but that is not scheduled until FY thirty four. And then you can see there Marion's estimated capital contribution is fifteen point nine million. So the future twenty eighty agreement, as I was mentioning before, the current allocation of funding is kind of convoluted and it isn't necessarily used for all the all the contributing cities in the same way. So we really wanted to to really address a few items there. We wanted it to be more predictable. We wanted it to be clear. And we wanted all of the contributing cities to really be on the same level so that everybody knew how they were contributing to this, to the treatment costs. So we decided to use, or what we're working towards right now, is using the same wastewater rates that we set for our large group or our large users. So those would be things like ADM and Cargill's and those international paper, those really large industries, because you're in the same same kind of boat with the the amount of flow that you're sending. Now, the strength of the wastewater that you send is a different strength. If you can think about it, industry sending chemicals down the wastewater, down the down the sewers to us, that takes a lot more energy and things to to treat. But it, we base it on the different constituents. And so it really just works out to be a lot more even for everyone involved. So you basically would be paying based on what you use. So it just makes a lot more sense to to all of us as we were walking through it, rather than the convoluted way we were doing it before of trying to to distribute costs. So we're working on that and we are hoping to have all of those negotiations completed by December. And then, did you wanna?
So I was just gonna add, as I mentioned there earlier, we've been working jointly with Marion and Hiawatha on this agreement. So that we'll be presenting a very similar presentation to Hiawatha in a couple of weeks. But we'll also be using the same same format, the same template for Robbins and Palo. And then Lynn County is a very small contribution, but we'll also utilize that same plan. So everybody will be essentially looking at the same type of twenty eighte, same duration, same same format going forward.
So I think that that is it. So.
Was that based off of the analysis as well, your your calculations?
Sure. So the the O and M costs would be based off of the population for the loading that's coming down. Just so that everything's fair. Population. And then we would do a flow component. So if there's a hu- a large flow component to it from a contributing city, that's that would be monitored using flow metering that we're working through that as well right now. So.
So that completes the presentation. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Yeah. And Mike, if you had anything you wanted to add.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen has a question.
So obviously, the large commercial companies that use a great deal of water are located in Cedar Rapids. The one that was just announced is this data center that is coming a handful of years down the road. How do you, is your plan able to adapt? I mean, that's gonna be, my understanding, that's gonna be a very, very large user of it. So are is your plan and this plant able to adapt to bring in a plant like that online, plus maybe some other large users down the road after this plant is already constructed and in use?
Yeah. So that's one real wonderful reason why we went with this aerobic granular sludge or AGS process, is that it's very modular. So all of the processes that we have on site are currently happening in different pieces. This actually brings a lot of those processes and they happen in one tank. So you have all of these different treatments happening in one tank. What's beautiful about that is that when you need another tank, you can just add on. And so we have a whole bunch of phases planned out. Hopefully, we're not doing them too quickly, but you know, it's okay. I'll be I'll be fine, right? No, it's it's good. It's a great process that that we will be able to just add incremental amounts as we bring on more industries or, you know, as as the cities grow and that kind of thing.
And and on the financial or or the flow component part of your question, yes. As any other industry is brought in, that all factors into what our overall allocations would be. So we we monitor all the large industries on a daily basis. All of that gets subtracted out before we start calculating any of the rest of the of the cost components. So yes, all of that gets factored in. And honestly, the more more industry, the more folks that we have to spread the love across, it brings everybody's cost down.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, thank you. Lauren, you 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 mentioned that our existing agreement is a fairly complex calculation. I think I tried to read that one time. Really, I did. I'm just here to tell everybody, I just went and strapped a bottle of aspirin on my forehead after trying that because my head just hurt. So what I'm, I have two questions. One is, confirm for me that the agreements that everybody will be using in the future will be uniform in their basic structure and not so necessarily reliant on a, you know, a calculus of of calculations that will confuse everybody. But are the components to the forthcoming twenty eighty agreements comprised of a flow component? And then a composition component of the effluent that has to be processed?
Yes. Yeah. So that was one thing that we've spent some time on and and why things have been a little delayed this year is that we wanted to make sure that we sampled the wastewater to see if there was a a possibility of using a population as kind of our baseline, rather than trying to sample and and bill based off of the the components in the wastewater every time. And the reason that gets really difficult is because there are so many different connections between Marion and Cedar Rapids that as you're trying to, you know, this pipe goes through Marion and this pipe goes in through Cedar Rapids and you subtract this one from that one. And it got, it it just is very challenging to try and do a lot of sampling. So we really wanted to get a good feel for, could we use a population as our basis for the the loading components for BOD, TSS, and TKN? And then for flow, we would use the flow monitoring because that is something that's already established and and we're used to. So that's that's how we plan to do it, is that we would use a population for the loading calculation. And then the flow would be done based on flow monitoring, real time flow monitoring.
So my my second question is, and last question, is in terms of the composition of the effluent that has to be processed, what's more difficult to process typically, residential or large commercial industrial?
It's a trick question. And I say that because industrials very generally is very consistent. We know it's gonna be high load. We know that the flow is gonna be relatively low. When you get to residential, because of all of the pipes in the ground, you tend to get a lot of variation on the flow. And my bugs don't like that. They they like to have, we have a very complex relationship. But they they really like a very consistent load. And so that's what's very beautiful about the way this treatment plant was kind of designed and put together is that because that industrial load is so consistent, we can add in this residential load and it doesn't have a huge effect on our bugs. So that's why I say it's kind of a trick question. It it's a lot more efficient to treat industrial load because it is a lot more consistent.
You used the word bugs. So now I get it. Okay, thanks.
We we consider ourselves bug farmers because we utilize the biology throughout the plant to break down the solids and remove odorous air. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of different bugs that we deal with.
Councilmember Sternad?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say thanks for the collaboration. I know there's been a lot of work and a lot of adjustments that have been happening over the years to get us to this point. So it was much appreciated. The, you shared with us our twenty year projection of what our staff recommends that we think we may be for usage or loads in your term. Can you share with us what your twenty year projection is as a complete plant build out? For what that number is, do you have you worked that far ahead to know? We we understand now you're thinking we're gonna be at sixty one thousand. I'm just curious to know what your capacity will be and what your projections are to articulate that back into our percentage of of the plant's overall operations.
So I'll take it first, Deb, and maybe Dave or Lauren will have something to add to it. But again, because we are the 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 ones with the industrial side, our population growth, and I'm sure there's numbers, I'm I'm sure I can talk to our community development folks, they have those numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head. But we are really looking more at the industrial side of the thing, of of the growth arena. So not as much on the population portion. We're looking more at what that industrial treatment may look like. Because honestly, the population, if it goes up by five, ten percent, it's a smaller portion overall of what the Cedar Rapids loading is to the facility. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Kind of, kind of does. Yeah, I was just kind of curious. You know, we don't have the, we don't have the the industrial component to that as as our neighboring cities do, obviously, but I was just overall trying to gauge what our portion of the pie was, so to speak, as far as what that growth looked like. That's what I was kind of curious. Because I know we're all experiencing growth or adjustments in that area. And I was just kind of curious what the overall plant goals we're looking for there. So.
Really, the more important part of that is the is the main lift station and and the and the flow part of that. Because the cities will see that that peak flow go up and down. And that's gonna be more important when we do that main lift station project, where we dial down more on what future populations are gonna be in in those associated flows. But not so much on this phase because it's more on the other components. Where industry loading overrides a lot of that population part of it. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
Sir, could I ask you, I didn't find who you are, just for the purposes of the recording for the public, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dave Wallace. I'm the utilities manager with the city of Cedar Rapids.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. All right. Mayor Portem?
This is probably a really basic question. So is the structure in which we operate here and how we've set up all of the costs or how this works, is this a is this how other communities do it? I mean, I feel like this is.
We are unlike anyone else. And I will, I will say, there's a reason for that, and that's because the treatment plant was designed to be unlike anyone else. Because, and I don't remember if you touched on this when you first talked about the the history of the plant, but when the plant was first constructed, ninety percent of it was covered by FEMA, excuse me, EPA funds. And the rest of that ten percent was provided by industry and contributing cities. And at that time, it was decided, and and I think rightfully so, that all of the industries would contribute to the capital cost. And then they wouldn't have to pre-treat. And we are very unique in that, in that we do not require pre-treatment from our industries. And so there is a component there that it it's a much higher load coming from these industries than anyone else usually sees. But there's a lot of benefits of that. And we're gonna see that here very shortly when we start capturing that the the revenue off of that gas production. Because we have all of these, and and I look at wastewater, you know, a lot of people look at wastewater as as a waste, right? There's something they're flushing, they want to get rid of it. It's really a lot of nutrients. There's a whole lot of benefit that we can recover off of that. And and biogases are kind of our first step into that. And I'm excited about that process. So because we have all of these loads coming to our plant and we don't require this pre-treatment process, we're able to capture a lot of those nutrients. So one side effect of that is that we are very different. And so the city has the ability to kind of, those economies of scale are are very different for the contributing cities, Cedar Rapids included, for the residents, because the industry carries a lot of that, the brunt of the the cost. So. Don't know if that answers your question.
Who knows? And I I have a little bit of a background in this because I was working in government affairs when the plant went down in the flood and had to deal with the industries who are going to be fined because they were then discharging untreated waste. And we had to get a bunch of federal waivers to deal with that situation. And it brought up the conversation that we have this kind of unique piece where other people sometimes have their own treatment within industry. And we didn't have that.
Sure.
For various reasons and benefits and what happened, but what happened if they didn't. So I know there was some uniqueness to it, but I also wasn't sure, you know, there's a lot of metro areas and one thing we all need is water treatment. So I was just curious as we, you know, you never like to reinvent the wheel and there's always something that's the best practice. And being newer, a couple of years into this term on this piece and going through the numbers, I was just curious if that was a.
Yeah. So we've also been in contact with the city of, well, Des Moines and and Davenport and reviewing how they do things. There's just, they're structured differently also. Some of them are regional authorities where, you know, everybody's kind of in on the the day to day. So all of the cities are are on a board together in some situations, rather than, you know, the city of Cedar Rapids owns this plant and provides treatment for the contributing cities. So Davenport is a little bit more like how we're structured here. But I I think we've looked at their twenty eighty and I I think we can do it better. So that's what we're what we're trying to to achieve there is make sure that everybody's, you know, the the rates are predictable, the it's fair and balanced. And I think that you'll see that coming out of this with the the collaboration that we've been having.
And I want to just add that, you know. And I want to just add that, you know, over the years, there's been a lot of, I don't know, de- debate and everything else. But in the last few years, working through these agreements, working with Ryan, Kim, Mike and others. It's been wonderful working together through, through this, uh, very complex process. So we truly, truly appreciate everyone's help in that.
Thank you.
I just, if I can just add one piece that I, when we talk about best practices and working collaboration, uh, and transparency, one of the other pieces that has come out of our discussions over the last year, year and a half, is that Cedar Rapids, not, not only have we worked together to where the, the flow meter should go, where the best locations are and what that best practice is. And we're using it throughout all of our community, you know, throughout all of our communities and not doing it one way, one community doing it one way, another community doing it another way. With that being said, the other thing that has been very beneficial is they, um, Cedar Rapids actually shared their software program that monitors where their, their meters. So we can take a look at their program, look at our program same time. So we're getting live information. It's more accurate. And then we can see whether or not we're off for whatever reason and then go check, then go check it. So we have, um, some, there's value, um, to that, obviously less cost if we can, if we can remedy something immediately and/or find that discrepancy and then set the meter correctly so that discrepancy isn't there. So that's been very helpful and, and a great part of our conversation too.
Is our federal funds a, at all a possibility here? Or I'm sure you've looked into it, but I'm curious from my own knowledge. I mean, there, there aren't those opportunities for this kind of a project or?
Our is, is, um, you know, there, there are a lot of federal dollars floating around. We have been looking at all sorts of different, uh, ways of obtaining that. We are currently working on two fairly large grant applications that, um, we hope that we will be successful with, but we won't know for several months yet.
And if those materialize, does it impact the numbers you put up there that?
Yes, it would, it would impact everybody's.
Okay. Right. Any, oh, go ahead. Yes.
Couple of times you mentioned the revenues from the byproducts once the new systems are in place. Will those revenues help offset the cost of the, of your upgrades? And will that offset the cost that Marion has for the improvements that are being made?
So I can start with that one. So, so, so far we have not included any of the revenue from gas or RINs credits in any of our calculations. We've basically taken an extremely conservative approach, looking at costs, looking at, at funding, looking at payback, everything else. Um, the, there should be, you know, RINs credits can vary substantially and a lot of times depending on, uh, which party is in the White House, they go up and down. If you go back in history, gas prices also go up and down. So it's really a moving target. So we didn't want to plug in something and then all of a sudden say, oh, we, we missed that target considerably. So we've been very conservative and, and left all of that out of our calculations. Yes, in all reality, there should be both sale of gas and RIN credits that come back our way through it. And we have, again, not, not figured whether that will come as a, uh, reduction in cost or a shorter payback period, or just exactly how they will best be applied. I, I've, I've yet to confess myself as a financial wizard. So we're working with our finance director and our financial consultants to try to figure that out. Once we really know, uh, obviously it's going to take a few years for the construction until we even have gas to produce and, and put out there on the market. So we'll work through that as we continue to move forward. The other part too, is if gas, I mean, if I'm right, if gas costs go up, then we'll be able to utilize that gas within the plant itself. No. Is that right? Right direction? So if gas goes up and we're paying for more gas within our facility, then we'll be able to just turn right, that right around and utilize that within our own facility. So it, it, it's going to vary considerably as we go, but we're still sorting out some of those details.
Any more questions? Let's go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not a question, more of a statement. Uh, I want to echo what Roy had, had mentioned about the collaboration and just working together. Um, it is, it has been, um, a wonderful process, uh, this last two, year and a half, two years, uh, that we've been going through and, um, the, the presentation, um, that you're seeing here today is not the last time you'll see this. So we'll continue to bring things back before council, uh, as, as we continue to make progress. It's a, it's a Herculean task that they have, um, in front of them. And, um, so as we continue to go through, we'll, we'll make sure we're updating you and you'll, you'll likely see them more, more, uh, in the future. But really appreciate them coming out and sharing and, and just being great partners in this whole process.
I'm happy to hear about the collaboration because that sets, sets the tone for other areas that we can collaborate. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a presentation on the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority's application to the D N R. Hello.
Hello. I am Thomas Doyle. I'm the environmental specialist in the engineering department and I'll be presenting on the D N R's Creek Sign Grant Program. So the reason that I'm presenting on this is because the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority has multiple locations that they're looking at getting signs for that are within Marion. So just a bit on the background of the grant. So it provides up to $10,000 that covers the cost of creek signs, posts and the labor to install the signs. Um, here you can see the types of signs we'd be looking at. So it's essentially the signs that you see on DOT interstates and roads when you cross bridges. The reason this grant exists is, um, because if people know, or they're able to see the signs and then they know what their local watershed is, that will hopefully have lead to better environmental outcomes because they'll be more aware of them and they'll make, um, choices that have better, um, environmental impacts. Uh, so in Marion, we lie almost entirely within the Indian Creek Watershed. So we obviously have Indian Creek running through town and then to the west, we have Dry Creek. Um, to the north, we have Berry's Run and to the east, we have Wanatee Creek and Willowood Creek. And those are all tributaries of Indian Creek. Um, a bit more about the grant details. So again, the Indian Creek Watershed Management Authority is applying for the grant and they have proposed locations in all the municipalities, um, in the Indian Creek watershed. Um, because Marion is such a large portion of the watershed, a majority of the signs are within Marion. So here is the map of all the, uh, sign locations that the W M A is looking at. There's a more zoomed in one on the next slide with Marion. So don't squint too much at this one. But essentially all these locations assume that the W M A gets the full $10,000 from the grant and the W M A would be applying a $5,000 match for it. Uh, there's no match needed from the city of Marion. However, all the cities that are involved in this have agreed to waive the cost of installation for the signs, um, in order to maximize the number of signs that can be purchased through the grant.
We like that there's still match.
Yeah. I was, I was told that that would be a good thing to.
Um, it's always good.
So within the, within the watershed as a whole, there are 40 locations. And since a majority of the locations are in bridges where you'd have one sign for each lane, um, that equates to 71 signs total for the watershed. Uh, looking at Marion, uh, specifically, there are 16 locations. Uh, seven of these locations would be those big green roadside signs. And nine of the locations would be the smaller brown trail signs that would be on, uh, park trails. Or in two cases, it would be on the sidewalks of, um, roads. And this, uh, adds up to 33 signs total for the watershed. And one thing to note, so on the very right side of this, on that black line, um, that's the border of the watershed. So that, that point that's all the way over there, that is just a entering the watershed sign. Um, so it's not going to say the name of a creek or anything. So there's not a creek there. It's just the divider between watersheds. So the next, or the next steps for this, um, as part of the grant, um, all the participating communities need to provide a letter of support for the program, um, saying that they are interested in getting these signs installed. The grant application is due April 1st. Um, if we are awarded the, uh, grant, uh, it's likely that we'd be notified of that in early summer. Um, and I've talked to some of the staff at the D N R that administer this program and they really like the application that the W M A has. And they say that, they've told me that we'd be very competitive for the grant. And then after being notified of getting the grant, there are two years to install the signs. And I've spoken with our public services department to confirm that that is a reasonable amount of time for them to get all that installed. So. Um, and then on Thursday's agenda, um, there is a resolution to support, um, the W M A's application.
Okay. Questions? Please straight forward.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. All right. Next is Lucas with a discussion on recommended pay policies.
Hi there. Uh, so this is, uh, in follow-up, uh, or the next step of our compensation study implementation. And so, uh, last year we did, uh, implement the comp study recommendations for police and non-bargaining. And then we did our first set of policies. Uh, so now we're looking to do the next set. Um, and initially we did aim for January, uh, but as a reminder, we, uh, just had some system limitations that we had to work through. Um, and so we got that up and going and are good to go for, for April. And so, uh, first we'll talk about comp time for exempt employees. Um, so effective April 6th, um, exempted salary employees will no longer be able to accrue, uh, comp time. Uh, they'll still be able to carry any type of balance that they have, uh, but they'll, um, uh, won't be able to crew it and we'll, we'll move to true fashion of what it means to be salary, uh, per the Fair Labor Standards Act or the F L S A, uh, laws. And so, um, one important note is that, um, the, the comp time will still pay out, we'll do, still do our path practice of paying out up to 480 hours. But that, that bucket won't grow with their salary. It'll just be their salary as of, um, April 6th. Um, so that, that won't, um, still compound on that. And so, uh, we do have that in place. We also did take into account for when, um, employees go from hourly to salary through different promotions. And so the same kind of concept will still apply. If they do decide to carry it as a balance, it'll only be paid out at the highest rate it was accrued at, not what they're leaving the city as, whether it's retirement or another opportunity. So, um, that's on the salary side. And then on the, um, hourly side, uh, again, to help support the, uh, Fair Labor Standards Act, um, we're recommending moving to a 40 hour week. Uh, currently it's based on an eight hour day. Um, but we're like, we'd like to recommend moving to a 40 hour work week, um, which is more aligned with best practice as well as F L S A. Um, and then for hourly, uh, we're, um, taking a uniform approach and changing the content cap to 240 for, uh, all non-bargaining and ask me employees. Um, we have some inequities within our policy that we're, we're correcting with the, with this recommendation. And so, uh, lastly, uh, we are recommending implementing a COLA or a cost of living adjustment. Um, this will help us stay more competitive with the market with our, uh, scales. Um, this will be based off of the marketing conditions. Um, you know, what are comparables doing? What is the, uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics publishing? Uh, but then as well as financial ability as well. Um, so we'll do this as part of the budget process, uh, on that annual basis. Um, and we'll kind of have, kind of meet in the middle as far as see what we can do financially and then what the market's doing. So, uh, and then the COLA would apply to both the range and the individual. And that, that concludes, um, of our recommendations for our pay policies as part of the step of implementation. Are there any questions?
Questions for Lucas? Steve?
Uh, Lucas, not, not a question, but a, a statement. And, uh, again, I would have to say, uh, so I, this is my seventh year on city council. The compensation area for this city has been the most confusing area besides wastewater treatment that I have seen. And, uh, so you have now cleaned it up. Speak metaphorically because it was so confusing and I know the city needs to make sure that we are being very competitive with the private industry and a number of jobs as well. And, uh, the compensation policies that the city has been using and following is not on par with private industry. Uh, so I think the steps that have been done, the amount of time and effort that has been put into this area is well needed and looking forward to all of the changes. So, uh, thank you for all the work and everybody else that has been involved and participated in that.
Thank you. Uh, the leadership team's been great. Uh, it's definitely been a team effort. Um, it's, it's definitely been a team effort for sure.
I, I know this is hard work and, and, and making sure it's done in the right way to get buy-in from everyone and that we really appreciate all the work. Um, it's, you know, it's been something that we were questioning and concerned about for, for a number of years. It's great to see it finally being, uh, dealt with and, um, just want to appreciate everybody's, um, again, buy-in into, into it because it does impact everyone. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Lucas. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Gary. Uh, residential building permit fees. Hi Gary.
Good afternoon. Um, so I've been working on, um, residential, um, permit fees. Been looking at it since August off and on. It's been on our projects, projects in motion for quite a while now. So I'm finally ready to bring it to you guys. Um, so fees for, um, the building permits for residential have not been updated since, uh, for 16 years, since 2008. Um, in that 16 years, inflation's been between 40 and 45%. And, um, construction costs have went from $88 a square foot to $168 a square foot. So currently we're using, um, one, one fee for everybody, commercial and, and residential. Um, it's, it's all figured off of dollar valuation. So in other words, what we do is we take the square footage of the, of the building and we multiply it by a, um, a factor for, um, the structure, for the type of building it is. And that's where we come up with our dollar valuation and we have, we, uh, put that into our permit table. So the, the commercial projects are all figured off of the international codes, building valuation data, which is updated twice a year in February and then in August. Um, we've used that and updated like once a year. We usually do that in August. Um, residential is, is figured off of, um, a $50 square foot valuation. So we're, right now, the numbers for, that are in the evaluation are higher. Um, for the commercial, it's not for the residential. So we need to try and get that caught up a little bit. Um, so I put together four different options. A through D and, and range anywhere from, um, 20% increase to a 60% increase. So I put in a couple of examples. I, I pulled 10 house plans that we did last year for mitts form. Um, and I just grabbed a couple out of there that were, were about average. So I, I did a, an example of a 1,900 square foot house, partially finished basement, covered deck and a garage. And then a 1,675 square foot house, unfinished basement, deck and garage. So I put those numbers in here. So the current fee that we, we collected for that one, um, for the first one was, was, um, $1,913. And for the other one, um, $1,420. You see the, the fee options we have there. Clear to the right here, um, are the city expenses. I put numbers together for our employees, um, put their wages, um, benefits, um, materials that they use. We tried to allow something for, um, fuel and for credit card fees. We tried to account for everything in that. Um, so I figured the city expense on the, on the first project was about $2,000. And actually the second project, being a smaller project, was, was actually $2,200. And it should have been closer to $1,500. The reason I put that in there is I want you to realize that no matter what we do, no matter what our permit fee is, there could, there could be a, a, a problem with the project. Um, this one in case, this one had structural issues we had to work through and get people to, um, get it right. And so it should have been around 1,500 and it ended up being about $2,200 for staff time. And so it should have been around 1,500 and it would have been about $2,200 for staff time. So I pulled I pulled some all of our comparable cities, 11 of them. And currently we're sitting at we're equal to or lower than what most cities are doing. One of the things that I did pull like Cedar Rapids and Cedar Rapids is lower than everybody. And I don't know that we'll ever get anywhere close to what Cedar Rapids is. Also, they are going to be looking at their fees come summer or fall. I talked to the building manager down there and that was kind of their plan to look at theirs too. So option A right now is going to be equal or higher to what all the other cities are. Option B is probably just a little higher than average. Option C is probably going to be really close to average with what everybody else is doing. And option D is slightly lower than the average. So I also sent out an email to the to our 11 comparables and asked them if their if their fees cover their expenses for their department. I got replies from six of them. Five didn't answer. The five of the six that did answer said that their department's revenues do cover their building department expenses. So staff is going to recommend we use the ICCB, the building valuation. That would be page four I gave you. That would be that that knows numbers. We're going to update that. We would update that once a year, probably every comes out in August. So when it comes out, we would we would update that. The the fees and the the numbers don't really change that much. They do change some. Over the last four years, the biggest increase that the building evaluation has taken is $25. And that was from 2020 to 2021. We had a spike in in costs at that time. It's leveled off and it's it's hardly gone up at all. A few dollars here and there and it could go down as well as go up. Staff is also recommending option C in using the the residential table for the for the building valuation and then option C for the the cost. And that would be on page one of the handout that I gave you. Also, we're looking at changing a few other fees while we're while we're doing that. Rental housing, the multifamily. We want to change the no-show and the registration fees. Currently, the no-shows, we don't charge for per units on the multifamilies. And we want to, we want to charge $5 per unit on those. And the residence or the registration fee, we charge 15. We want to, we want to bump that up to 20, strictly because it takes it takes us a lot longer than we really anticipated it would when we started this program. Also, we're looking at changing our administration fee from $20 to 25. That's mainly because BSNA, our new software provider, when we, when our customers upload plans, they're going to charge us $3. Three, well, depends on how many, it could be, it could be up to five. It's three to $5 depending on on the number of sheets that they they upload. So we want to try and cover that. I also am looking at our hourly charges. We don't use hourly charges very often, but when we started figuring out what it costs our staff, what we have to pay them, we want to change that from 50 to the to $100 an hour to cover their time. And and again, anything else that's included in that. And then lastly, I want to, we want to change our mechanical, electrical and plumbing fees. Currently, it's it's pulled off of a building evaluation, which is their mechanical evaluation or electrical evaluation. And that is actually included in the ICC building value data. So we don't want to hit them twice on something. So we want to change that to a $50 flat fee. And the reason we want $50 is that it'll give our staff time to check their licenses, make sure they are licensed. We don't, we don't allow anybody that's not licensed with the state to do the to work in Marion. So that's why we're, we'll do a $50 flat fee for that. Any questions?
Questions for Gary? What, what's the direction you're looking for?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the direction you're looking for? So it says?
Well, we're looking, we we want to know, we're recommending option C. I guess the direction I'm looking for is if that's okay by everybody or if you want me to go lower or higher or you know, where where we want to land in there.
So does anybody have any questions before we get to that? Or Sarah, go ahead. You do.
Okay, once we kind of right-size this to, I always hate this and having worked in industries where you're dealing with membership fees and things that happen, when you don't do increases on a regular basis, suddenly then you end up with these kind of jumps. And they get a little startling. And it's not comfortable for anybody, especially I I feel in the atmosphere of what the between lending rates and everything else going on, I'm very cautious about, you know, kind of piling on to what I think some of our building community is facing right now. So my I want to be careful about that. So I'm curious if you're receiving any feedback from our friends at the chamber or others who are working directly with, because not only for the builders, but I worry that that then gets passed on to residents or potential residents who are then, if that is, it becomes too much. So I know this is a minor piece, but I I'm aware of it and I think about the end user. So I first went to C as the options. But I also am wondering, is there a plan? What happens after this? You alluded to a little bit, Mayor, but it's kind of like, is there a plan that it's a dollar every year? It's just going to go up a dollar? It's going to just go up $5? Is this it? And then we're going to 10 years from now be like, oh, hmm, we haven't raised this for a while. We need to go back and adjust. I mean, is there, what's the, what happens after this?
If we if we adopt the ICC building valuation data, that will, we will just follow that. So every every year of the August one comes out, usually around September.
You back up, what is the IC?
The ICC building, the International Code Council's building evaluation data. That's the table that I I had given you. So that changes twice a year. And so if it goes up, then then our dollar valuation will go up. And that's what our permit fees, the table is valued off of. If it goes down, then if that, if the cost of building a new home goes down, then we will follow that down as well. So we will, it it'll give us a true estimate of what a what a house would cost.
So we're basically correcting for what we haven't done, putting it on this field. And then we're writing this, the stand, this code piece, however the is directed. Pass that up or down, however that looks.
And I would add to what Gary said. If you'd recall during the fiscal year 2024 budget development, one of the takeaways from that session was that we needed to go through all of our fees and get them caught up to current, which is what the work that Gary has in front of you. And you've been seeing numerous departments throughout the year coming forward with their fees. I think we've still got two or three departments to get through. But then the goal is then to be reviewing those annually and adopting that find that fee schedule at July for July 1 effective annually, so that we aren't getting behind in the future anymore. And they're not seeing those big increases. They're just seeing gradual increases as we do with everything.
Right, you had something?
Yes, so option C is your recommended.
That's what we're recommending, yes.
Okay. Stephen and I were just taking, doing a little eyeball ping pong here. And it just is curious that our option A, which is our current structure, option C, at least in terms of that rate structure and the incremental cost for additional valuation within each tier, option C seems to be a little bit less, except for that top very most expensive.
Option A is currently what we're using for commercial.
Okay.
And we, if you look at the one sheet I had, I highlighted the the residential R3 is circled in red. That would be on the sheet here. That's this one. Now, that is the only fee in this table we're not using right now. And that's that's residential for residential houses. So instead of the 167, 65, instead of that, we are using $50 a square foot. And and I've been in the this business for quite a while. And when I was working, doing retail back in the 25 years ago or better, we were, we were selling houses for somewhere between 50 and 75 dollars a square foot. That's how old this really is. So we would go to, we would go to this number. That's why we're lowering the other fee structure. We'll have two fees up, we'll have one for commercial and one for residential. And that's why we're dropping that down because we're going to use the the valuation, which is going to be higher. But the the fee structure will be a little bit lower, but it's still going to be a more, it's going to be a higher cost for the contractor.
So so the question is, based on what you're recommending to us, how will that projected revenue flow? How how beneficial will that be to the operations of your department?
Right now, we we cover anywhere between 75 and 80% of our of our expenses, of our revenue. I'm projecting that this will will level us off. So we should, we should cover it, cover our expenses.
So it'll go from 75 to 80% coverage to 100% coverage?
That's what I would project, yes.
Okay, but obviously the number of buildings requiring inspection, that's seasonally
Right.
variable and okay.
And it does, it does, I mean, there's a variable. I mean, if if housing continues to stay steady, we'll be fine. If the, and and I say fine, we're still going to be fine, but it's it's if we, if the housing numbers go down, then our our revenue, you know, obviously goes down. But it goes down now. I mean, if we're even at $50 a square foot, if the housing market drops, we still aren't doing that, doing new permits. So we're, the revenue is still going down. So I think that, I think that it's, it'll, I think it'll level off. I think pretty, pretty confident that we'll be able to be whole with the with the building department and cover our expenses.
Thank you.
Manny, go ahead.
Thanks for your work on this, Gary. Just for clarification, can you just remind us, are these fees imposed on all permitting across whether they're reconstruction or, excuse me, new construction or remodel?
So these will be, these will just be for the the $146 a square foot will be just for new construction, new additions, and then finishing a basement. So somebody's going to come in and finish their basement later. All the rest of the fees will still be figured off at dollar valuation of the, well, if you if you look at, if you look at sheet four, that one, so like the for a detached garage, we're looking at $35 a square foot. So we brought those fees, you know, we're keeping those fees low. So if somebody building a garage or if they're doing a deck, those numbers are low. We're not using, we're not, for a new deck, we would not use the $146. We're still only going to use the $20 a square foot valuation. So we're keeping those numbers down.
Sure, okay. Thank you. And I just wanted to remind everybody the value that a lot of these, the time that goes in and doing the research, you know, you had mentioned something that triggered me in my industry. And that is, is when your department is looking for those registrations and certificates with the state. Insurance companies have to deal with workman's comp audits every day. So all of these vendors and these contractors that are working through these things need to be registered with the state of Iowa. And like you said, we don't issue the permit unless they are. And there's a lot of ramifications with companies that are coming in from out of town and doing these these remodels and things like that without pulling these permits. So these are critical, not only to our city staff or, excuse me, our city, but it has a trickle-down effect as well, too, ultimately protecting the homeowner and the commercial business owner too. So there's a lot of layers to this onion and it is just the cost of doing business. And and for me, I appreciate, you know, you're, we're checking into their backgrounds and making sure that they're registered with the state because that's a, that's a huge issue in my industry. So and I know it's valued across the the plate. So thanks again.
And and to add to that, so we have, we had our open house, our developers' open house here. And I did, the contractors were there, I did tell them that we were looking at raising our fees. And then we did send an email out, we have 100 and some contractor emails. We sent those out and made them aware as well. And I have heard nothing from anybody, not good or bad. So it's like, I don't know if they're just in sticker shock or if they're just, they just figured they'll pass it on. I don't know.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just a brief comment, Gary. Obviously, it wasn't great that it took us 16 years to catch up. But I think as a city, what we're doing is achieving one of the objectives that has been outlined for the last 18 months. And that is to make sure that the fees that are being established do cover the underlying cost and that other areas of the budget do not have to subsidize those costs. So I mean, that's one objective that we've clearly been working on and have been, has been outlined and articulated by our city manager. And so this is just one more step in doing that. We've got a few more. So again, I think that this is a key area to keep moving in to make sure that we're meeting that objective.
Will this be on the agenda for Thursday then?
It will not. Finance is, will it be the next?
Okay. I didn't see it.
Yeah. So finance, I'll put it on there and bring it forward.
Okay, but is there anyone who would have any strong objection to the recommendation of the staff when it comes to a vote? Okay, is that the direction? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. All right, well, this time we have the review of the upcoming agenda for Thursday. The first item that's marked is on the, on page five of this handout, which is E3. Anything prior to E3? Okay, we'll go to E3. We have Mike Sands the Beard.
Yep. So for this, just high level, wanted to bring it to your attention that this and several items are regarding Alvernet Road project. So even though this project can't, at the earliest it will be bid February of '25, there's a lot of background information that we're doing. So we actually have a consultant that's going out and meeting with property owners. So questions may come, but as these are getting approved, we're bringing them to city council to purchase either temporary construction easements or there might be small triangles that we're acquiring from different property owners. But we're just following the 6B process and just wanting to make sure that you know this is going on in the background and what these items are.
Okay, any questions for Mike on that?
All right. The next item that's marked is on page six under A1, under administrative services. Anything prior to that item that anyone would like to discuss, questions on? Okay, I'll have the mayor for ten handle that one. There are questions on A1, so Leanne, go ahead.
Now that the Holiday Inn in Suites has been under construction, we saw a picture of that earlier today at the State of the City. East Town Crossing has brought forth a request to go ahead and assign the development agreement that was negotiated about a year ago on the hotel site and assign that to Hart Family Hotels. And that's all, nothing changes in the development agreement. It's simply just assigning it to the new owner.
Anybody have any questions? Back to Mayor.
Handle the next one also, please.
All right, the next item marked for discussion is F2. Is there anything before that that anyone would like thought up or have questions? Dave?
Okay. We've seen a lot of these slides before that you'll be seeing with the rezoning and demolition process. So it'll be a little doubling up, but I want to keep you walking along the entire story. We've been working on this project for almost a year now, trying to get it, get it off the ground. So on Thursday, Thursday, there'll be a public hearing for both preliminary and final site development plans. You look through the packet, they're identical documents because it's all being done in one phase. They're just titled differently, but it's, it's, they're essentially the same. As we know, this plan is to support the conversion of the church to 55 residential units. This has been through to the Marion Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the Cert Preservation Commission. And both, both commissions recommend approval of the project. So we're going to start with the site plan of the of the site. It's really unchanged. The first actual footprint of the building really remains the same. The the original church structure along with the classroom. The really only footprint, footprint changes will be with the removal of the awning, the drop-off awning on the east side. And that'll be replaced with a glass structure lobby entrance in that same area. But it's still, it's basically But it's still, it's basically the same existing footprint that exists today. As we look at some of the finer points of it, I'll get to parking in a second. Some of the earlier renderings you may have seen had a dumpster on, on Twelfth Street, on the front of the building, the front of the historic church. That has been relocated to the parking lot, obviously just for aesthetic purposes. And then we've had quite a bit of extensive landscaping replaced. It doesn't exist today. I think some previous renderings you may have seen had the handicap, handicap ADA ramp on the front side of the church. That has been removed. They've been able to make accommodations within the interior of the building instead of having to have that exterior ADA access. Moving on to parking, highlighted in red there on the sheet, this is approximately, this is twenty-six parking spots on the site itself. They have secured thirteen parking sites, thirteen parking spots on leased property from Farmer State Bank, highlighted in the other red bubble out there to the, the right-hand side. Then they are going to have public spots, but then they're going to use the balance of the parking with public spots within three hundred feet is where our code allows. There's fifty-nine on-street public parking spaces and another thirty-four public parking lot spaces, all within approximately three hundred feet of the, of what we call the, either front door of the building. Three hundred feet is what we do allow for accessory parking. By code, it's five hundred feet for commercial, three hundred feet for residential. So again, there's approximately a hundred and thirty-two total parking spots. That's including their own onsite ones within three hundred feet of the building. Kind of hard to see on the screen, but the, the purple lines represent the, the available public parking spots. Would you like me to pause here and talk, talk site plan, or should I just move on to the elevations and save questions at the end, preference? Okay. Looking at the elevations, we've seen these already, I think with the rezoning request, the Twelfth Street side is going to remain unchanged. We're just seeing the removal of the little ADA access as well as a sign. This will be reoccurring. Stained glass windows will be removed, restored, be configured a little bit to accommodate bedrooms, the ingress egress for fire emergency, and then they'll be put back into the existing opening. So as many windows as can be saved will be saved, or some might be a little more damaged and that can't be replaced. And there might be some internal layouts that might unfortunately lose a window, but they'll relocate that to another site. But the intent is to repurpose all the stained glass windows on, on all sides. As we look at the north elevation, and again, this will be facing Farmer State Bank, we're not going to really see a whole lot of changes to the original church. Again, same comment on the stained glass windows. We will start to see the classroom facade change. And I got a little more detail on that in a, a few slides here in a second. That's where we're going to see the most of the change to the north side of the building. As we look at the south elevation, this is the alley side, same story, original church remains relatively unchanged. And then we see the classroom facade removal and replacement. So we're going to kind of focus on this area a little bit. Just a blow up of the south side and the alley, and this kind of reflects the north side as well. Everything that's brick is brick that's going to be retained. They don't want to remove any more than they have to. But a lot of it's just going to be creating those, those balcony spaces, and these are the sliding glass door with just the railing more across than not a true traditional balcony, and then accommodating additional windows to meet all the requirements. A lot of glass on this side, or really on all sides of the classroom windows, because these are smaller spaces. They go from four hundred and fifty to eight hundred square feet approximately. So letting light in, a lot of natural light in, obviously makes the spaces feel larger. They're going to use a vertical metal panel to replace, where the brick is not going back in. Again, this is on all sides of the classroom. Again, the west side, this will be the, kind of the backside of the church. Again, this is where you see the removal of the drop-off awning that was used by the daycare and the, and the church, and that'll be replaced with two-story glass stairway entryways. These are stairways that are there today. So this is going to replace those essentially with the stairways as an architectural feature. Very flat, very hard to look at right now. So we'll look at some renderings. Again, this is the west side, that backside, and this is again where we're going to see most of the changes to this building on the exterior side. Day and night shots as we get a little closer. And again, all the brick that you see is brick that's going to be retained. They may be able to use some of that brick removed, do some of the facade improvements elsewhere. If they have to do some, they'll build a, kind of get that brick that matches pretty close. More of a street level view. Again, you can see the glass areas, those grayish-white areas. Those are the areas I'm going to see probably the most significant demolition removal on the site. And again, those are just the combination of stairways into the in and out of the buildings. And a close-up of the classroom wing, again, just showing a little bit more detail of that brick and metal siding. Again, their intent is to keep as much brick as possible on that facade. Next steps in the project, Thursday, if everything's approved, we'll see the kind of the completion of the rezoning and site and building design elements of it. And then we, the developer indicated probably a March or April groundbreaking ceremony. Kim and Leanne will be working with the, finalizing the development agreement. Council will see that probably in April or May of this year. And you'll see a beginning of spring construction. Asbestos remediation will be the number one item to take care of before they can really get into the rest of the building. But then we'll see an active construction site for probably about eighteen months or so. And the developers and his team are here in the audience. If we had specific questions, I can ask or answer them. General questions, but if you have something specific for them, they are here tonight to try to address any comments or concerns you may have.
All right, questions?
Just had one here, Dave. I know, because I know it keeps coming up. The, can you just refresh my memory? The parking on the street where it was marked green? We understand that those are public spaces. Can you refresh our memory though? Are those available for overnight parking, or are those limited to the hours of general public parking?
All public parking has the time limit. I believe it's forty-eight hours. We can confirm with the police chief here in a second if we have to. Just like you would on a residential street, we, the parking lot is not assigned to restrict parking. If that's an option, that can be an option. The council can proceed with, but right now, I think it's forty-eight hours.
Forty, okay, very good. I just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think everybody here knows I've had, I've been talking parking about this project for the last year and a half. I think one of the responsibilities, first of all, this is a very good project to save the church. I think the design is, is very good as well. I still have a serious concern about the parking. So I'm looking at your numbers. I, I went out and map, did my own map the other day, and I come up with fifty spots. I'm excluding the parking lot with thirty-two spots in there and all of that. Because again, if I had my brothers in the future, that would not be included for overnight parking. That said, I came up with fifty spots that are within one block of this project. So I'm not including anything on Seventh Avenue. These are anything that is within one block and easily accessible. So all of the projects that we have done in the past with residential units uptown, we try to achieve a one-to-one ratio. If they've got forty units, we want forty spots. So if we include the twenty-six plus the thirteen, that's thirty-nine with a point seven-one ratio. So I feel that the city, based on that ratio, is already making accommodation to support this project, not only from a financial standpoint, but also from making that exception right there. So my concern is that if those thirteen spots on the leased Farmer State Bank property are not there down the road, you're now down to a point four-seven ratio, to me, which is unacceptable. So our responsibility as a city council is to be able to make decisions today that will impact our citizens and the area in the next five to twenty years plus. So we know, I think everybody here on city council has a vision that the uptown area is going to get larger. It's going to grow to the east, to the west, and probably at least certainly to the south. Everybody feels there is at least some parking issue today. So if we're going to, if the uptown area is going to continue to expand as we would anticipate, to me, that's going to put more of a pressure on that area as well. So my question to the developers of this project is, my understanding is that there is a potential lease being worked out with Farmer State Bank on the thirteen sites. My question to them is, what is the term of that lease? And when that expires, what are you going to be doing to support parking if that goes away?
I could invite the developer up here if you'd like to answer the question.
Members of council, Darrell Hi, twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue, L C. So the, the term of the lease we're negotiating with farmers currently, apologize for my voice, is three years from the end of construction, so basically five years. We, we do believe, you know, by our calculations, that we'll have enough parking. And if you indulge me just for a minute, I'll try to go through the math that we looked at. It's, it's similar to yours, council member. We have fifty-five units. The average unit size is five hundred and seven square feet, so they're smaller units. We're anticipating probably about one car per unit. On-site provided twenty-six. The reserved in Farmer State Bank, we're using those thirteen. The reason it's not the full twenty is they have snow and snow emergency parking that they felt they needed to hold some back. That would give us thirty-nine, so we would need an estimated thirteen. And in our count, where parking could be used for our residents, there's between eighty and ninety spaces. And those would be, you know, fluent because, you know, our tenants go to work and so forth. But, but I did, I did want to bring up a comparison because I think you're exactly right. I think how the city council looks at parking for our project is the same they should look for every other project. And as many of you know, I came within a whisper of buying Broad Main. In fact, I brought the signed purchase agreement that I have here tonight, and I just wanted to give you a comparison because it's exactly the same zoning. The total square feet for Broad Main is forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-two. Of that is sixteen thousand eight sixty-five is commercial. They have thirty-six units that average seven hundred square feet, so their units are about two hundred square feet more than us. Their parking commercial, if you did a ratio of five per thousand, which I think I would tell you that, that might be a little light, but in uptown, that might be, in a, in a urban setting, that might be acceptable. Five stalls, that would give you eighty-four, and one per unit would give you thirty-six. And they have a hundred and twenty needed and provided sixty-five surface. So they need fifty-five stalls, and we need thirteen. And, and they were approved, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying that to be flippant. I'm just saying that it's, I think if you look at that project and their second building, when it gets built, which we, we know it will, they'll have underground parking, but that underground parking will serve that, that building. So the ratio that I'm giving you today on the needs is just based on their square footage versus our square footage. So I, I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, I wouldn't build it if I didn't think I could park it. Because my residents are not going to call the city council. They're going to call Darrell Hi and find out why, where they're supposed to park. And I do believe that the parking for those thirteen needed, which probably won't be thirteen all the time, because we do believe we'll have a few people that might not even have cars. We'll have some vacancy, so we'll have some of that. But those thirteen parking spaces can ebb and flow, and those eighty to ninety that are surrounded in that area, and I believe it'll be accommodated just, just fine. I don't think it'll produce a problem for us, and I don't think it'll produce a problem for our residents, and I don't believe it'll produce a problem for the city.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can completely agree, Darrell, on trying to compare your project to Broad Main on Seventh.
Sure.
Broad Main has the entire lower level for commercial use. And commercial projects and the parking associated with that are not viewed the same as the apartments and the expected parking spaces that would be needed for that. So I'm not going to try to compare the two. So my hangup here is really that you're only talking about a short-term lease on the Farmer State Bank spot. If you want to come back with a much longer-term lease or an option to buy or something like that, I'm all in. Without that, I'm not in support of this project, only for the parking specific reason, because again, I do not want to push a problem down the road.
No, I understand, council member, and I, and I will just tell you that the precedent though, that the council would set that a project would not be approved if it can't go out and buy all the parking it needs, it would be, I think, I think that'd be a dangerous precedent to set.
This may be my only personal opinion. I'm not voicing any opinion for the rest of the city council. I've been on this topic for a very long time, and I think you've had an opportunity to come up with a better solution than a three-year lease after it's completed, because then all of a sudden, that parking is, is now a bigger problem. And the citizens are not going to call you, Darrell. They're going to call us.
I, I understand, I understand. I, I would tell you that I, I can't make them
I understand.
any more than, than they're doing. If, if I don't have them at all, I still think I've got the best project I can build for the city. I, I don't know what, I can tell you that we had this conversation today, you know, in, in, council members correctly, with the piling on of cost and interest rates, which is not anybody's fault. It's just a reality. And I will tell you that, and I posted this on my LinkedIn profile, so you can go find this if you want to find it. The multifamily housing permits in the country are down forty percent. So the number of units that are going to get built is decreasing. It's not decreasing because something happened in Marion, Iowa, Iowa in general. It's just, it's just, it's a fundamental fact of what's happening with increased interest rates and raising costs on, on construction. So I believe that the fifty-five units that we are putting in the church is about a two-for-one. It's costing two dollars to produce one dollar of value in the project. And the only reason that works is the willingness of the state and the city to all go together and find the grants needed to build this project. Because I can just tell you that without those, it doesn't, it doesn't pencil. It's, it's, it's a no-go. And, you know, if you look at the low-income housing tax credit awards that were awarded last year, two of them have already been returned, the credits are returned. That's almost unheard of in the state of Iowa. Historically, the, the competition for those awards is a three-to-one, three, three submissions for every one award. The reason they're turning it in is not because they're not qualified, it's not because we don't need affordable housing. It's because they cannot make the numbers work. And I can tell you, I've done everything in my power since I got invited to be a part of this project some, almost two and a half years ago, to find a way to produce something that could save that building and still pencil, and this is the best I can do. So if we tear, if we turn it down, we're going to tear it down, because that's the only thing that's left to do if we don't find a way to approve the project.
Yeah. Darrell, two, two areas of questions that I have. One is, in your experience with all of your properties, do you have any kind of a known ratio of the number of vehicles that are owned by rented or leased units? And my question is, is it one-to-one, or is it, is it really one to, you know, point six? I guess I'm trying to understand, because I can honestly, you know, I think there will be some people who just don't have a vehicle.
Sure.
For whatever reason. But I, I'm just curious what your experience tells you.
I, I would tell you that I believe that it does depend a little bit on the unit mix. And, and I'll, and I'll try to use a project that most everybody in this room is probably driven by. So over on Glass and Edgewood Road, we've built Riverview. It's a hundred and eighteen units. It's got structured parking underneath. It's got ninety units, and that's a two, because that's in the Cedar Rapids. That's a two-car or two-part per, per unit. Now, there are sixty percent of those are two bedrooms, and probably ten or fifteen percent are three bedrooms. So there are some families, and there are plenty of people that have two. But if you've ever driven by there, I mean, we've got an Astrodome parking lot out there that's almost never used. So my guess, my best guess would be somewhere around one and a quarter to one and a half cars. Because you're gonna, you are going to have single people that live there that have one car. You're definitely going to have single people living in an environment where the unit is only five hundred and seven square feet.
Okay. My next question, it really concerns the Farmer State Bank parking availability. As I'm just looking at, from my friends at Google, the aerial map for the, the proposed lease space that you're talking about. I think there's twenty-one slots that are showing there. And, and so you would be utilizing And, and so you would be utilizing thirteen of those. And then as I look at the rest of the Farmer State properties, I think, I haven't verified any of this, I'm just, what I'm trying to understand is what prevents this project from using all twenty-one slots in that parking lot? Is there customer plus employee demand on all of their other available parking? Whether it be on the main bank or on the, the drive, drive-through? I, I guess I'm wondering just what their, you know, consistent parking demand is for that, that if they need surge capacity for their employees that maybe are parking on street, could that still be accommodated within the total number of spaces available to them on native property? And that, only they can answer that.
Yes, sir. We ask for the maximum spaces they would allow us, and Mr. Neber told us he, we could have thirteen. So that's how many we got.
Well, I just, just one other thought, I guess I'd, Kim, what are our, our commitments on this relative to financial incentives? What's the term of all of that?
Is it, it's a, as far as the development agreement?
Yes.
It, it is a twenty, it's a twenty-year term. The first ten years is abatement, a hundred percent abatement. And then we go to the following ten years where we split it for fi- five years at the hundred percent, and then the last five at fifty percent.
Okay, and so what Farmers is proposing is a five-year commitment for those thirteen spaces?
It's, it's basically what we've proposed, we've had some conversations, we don't have it exactly locked in today. We can't have it, I think, agreed to, we have a letter from them on the, on the thirteen spaces. We had talked about in three years, and obviously we wouldn't lease it until we finish the building, so it'll be five years from now.
So I guess I'm just, if, if, if our term of financial incentive is ten, twenty years, I guess I'm just thinking, I'd certainly like to see the commitment to any available spaces in that outlot, if you will, be somewhat commensurate with the, with, you know, our commitment. I'm not making at all that a clear concept, and I can add some more words if you'd like. Kim, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Daryl, do you see what I'm saying?
I, I do, and council member, I, I'll just go back to, I've, I've done this for a very long time, and I know you folks have been on council for a long time. I just think it's, it's in rare territory to make a building owner that has a zoning go out and mandate that they find parking somewhere else. Because I think you're going to have a number of projects in town that are going to have some kind of variance to, I believe where we're going is the one-to-one. And I, and I believe that if, if we needed sixty, and that's the reason we canned the larger project. Well, there was multiple reasons, but one of them was, was that we were, we were just not ever going to get there on the parking. We were never going to get there on the money either. And so we, we retooled and went back to what, what we have now. And part of the allure, I think, to the twenty-six stalls that are on-site, you know, they're, they're going to go with the nicest units that are in the, in the building. We've got some four hundred and fifty square foot kind of efficiencies in the garden level that, you know, or in the low, in the basement, that's the, that's the nice way of saying the basement. You know, and those are going to be more affordable and, and, you know, they're going to be like my Coventry project downtown where my office is. They're going to probably park on the street. And even if I do give them parking over in the farmer's lot, they're still going to park on the street. Because they're going to come home and they're going to park wherever it's easier to park. But that, that's what happens in downtown Cedar Rapids, and they got parking ramps everywhere. And I, it just, it's kind of a first-come, first-served basis, and I don't think, I don't think it's created any problems.
Well, I just, I guess, just at a very high level, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to the concern that Steve has articulated. I just, we've got a unique situation here, we're trying to do a very unique project, or you all are trying to do a very unique project to save a, you know, a historically significant building, so nobody can overlook that.
Right.
But we do have, at least perceptionally, we do have a parking problem in the uptown. And I'm really waiting, Ryan, for the parking study to come forward to give us some, some data on that. But I guess what it just amounts to is, as creative as you're being relative to saving this building, saving the property, having nice accommodations for people that will lease those units or buy those units, whatever that structure is, I just think that, you know, sort of the reach higher mentality, we got to figure out somehow not to, not to exasperate what may be shown to be already, you know, a difficult parking problem, that's all. I, I, so if there's other levers that can be pulled on this, you know, maybe acquisition of more spaces in that lot, I'd just be all for that if that's at all achievable.
Councilmember Harper, I just wanted to also, just for clarification, the development agreement is what we're currently working on, and Dave mentioned that we'd be bringing that full agreement then back. It'll be completed then in April, May as well. And the reason why we did match the twenty years is because that is also the CDB, CDBD, GDR. That is also a twenty-year agreement.
Thank you.
Just a comment and then a question in a different lane. I agree, you know, every parking spot that can be acquired matters, especially with the perception that we have with uptown parking right now. And the finalized parking study will be really helpful, I think, with that in the future. I live in townhomes on the south side of town. And so I see your point, Mr. Hi, when you say, you know, we, we all have two-star stall garages in our townhomes. Most of the people park in the street because they fill their garages with storage. So it's really hard to control human behavior, you can provide the parking for them, they may not use it. So I do, I a hundred percent see your point there. I deal with it every day on my street, and the street's always full. But yeah, I think every, every parking space that we can get matters here. My, my question in a whole different lane, though, you mentioned the, the lease is, starts out the completion of construction. So again, remind me, when, what's the timeline for this project?
It should, it should take about eighteen months from when they really start construction, which we hope is summer.
Okay.
So that puts us into like summer, or, yeah, summer of twenty-six, fall of twenty-six.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
I do have one. Will the parking, will people pay for parking? Is it like an up lease, like here's your lease, if you want parking, it's this amount more? And that's your spot? Or is it like, hey, I get to have my car in this lot, or I pay a different fee for that lot? Or is it just, this is available for the apartments? If you, this year, we don't know whether you have a car or not, use the space, up to you?
Right, it's the first, it'll be reserved and, and go along with the unit. So, so if you think about probably the most expensive unit in the building, we'll get the, the best parking stall. And you'll just walk down the line until you burn up that twenty-six. And so, I mean, in the event that you would lease one of those and somebody would go, I don't have a car, then you would just open, you would just bump that, that, that stall down to the, to the next available.
So people are knowing going into their lease whether or not they have a reserved space or availability with the having a car for what they need to do. Okay, I think, I think, because the sensitivity isn't just with you, with the facility, it's that, you know, we hear about parking problems in uptown. And so then it tends to roll into where people are like, oh, well, now you're just adding more capacity to a place that doesn't exist. So, but that was the big one. So technically, part of that lot could be empty if people aren't parking there. If they decide to park in the street instead of using their spot in the thirteen lot, like you said. But people will know going in whether there's space. And there's no adjustment because of the way that, in order to make this project financially a reality, there's no way to change the number of units, right? We're, we're.
If, if you lose units, you're, you're on the nice edge right now. I mean, like I said, we, we, nobody likes to not do the other project, especially pay the fees that it takes to draw those nice drawings and then not use them. You, you just don't have anywhere to go. I, I mean, we, we've got, we've, if you think about it, you have fifty-one units that are income restricted. Okay, so out of the fifty-five, twenty, eight of them are income restricted. So those rents are set by HUD, so that locks you, that income stream in there. You got the other units that you're going to try to maximize to get, to get the, the project to work. And, and you literally have a project that's going to cost ten and a half million dollars to do that's worth six. That, that, that's just what it is. And I, I just can't lose any, I, I've done my best, and, and so has Kyle and, and their whole team at, at Martin. I mean, they, they've done their best of giving us the units. We've tried to maximize the coolness of the units with the glass and some of that stuff, the stained glass, to, to see if we can get the rents where we need to be. It is the highest rent per square foot project that I've ever done alongside the one we're currently doing in Newbo. So we, we pushed the envelope with the appraisers to get there, and it's still, it's, it's tight. You know, i- if it wasn't, I mean, I, I would, I, I mean, I'm in the money-making business. So I, I do forty-five units if I can get a check any day of the week. But I'm also old enough to have done projects that didn't work. And so I, I mean, I, I know what it is to try to look at the data and not talk yourself into doing something you shouldn't do. And, and we, we need, we need, we need every unit that's, that's there and then some. But I do think it worked out well for, for the fact that they were creative enough to take what was there and turn it into something really cool. And, and then allow us to have that, that parking that's on-site. Because that, that'll be something that'll be special for those units that, that get it.
There are questions for Daryl? Questions for staff? Randy? Thanks, Daryl.
I just had one final question here for the staff, but thank you, Daryl. Can, can we be just reminded, I believe our current parking lot is under a lease agreement with a first right of refusal. Can somebody just refresh us when our contract is actually up on that parking lot, just because it is relative to this topic?
Well, can we get that information to you before Thursday?
Very good, thank you.
Your honor, I'm, I've got a sixteen-year-old that's going to sing here in about ten minutes. I don't want to be disrespectful, but I'm going to leave if that's okay.
You're good. I think that's all of our questions on that. Oh, you got one more?
Kyle Martin, two ninety-nine Sixth Avenue, also Martin Gardner Architecture on the team. I don't want to belabor the discussion on parking, but I, I think it's worth telling the story about my day today. I walked my daughter to Vernon Middle School, then I walked to the library to vote, then I walked to my office, then I walked home for lunch, then I walked back to work, then I walked here to City Hall. My car stayed at my house all day long, and that is a potential concern of, of tenants that would live here and they would have a car nearby, and they would circulate through uptown and never move their car. But I think with the income adjustment portion of the project, that some of those people, as Daryl mentioned, they have access to public transit, they may not have access to a car. And then other people that are on the higher end of the market rate, that Daryl also mentioned, they're going to live here for a very specific purpose. And they're going to, they may have different attitudes about how they live and how they use their vehicle. And they may be more aware of the needs of uptown, and uptown is very much an ecosystem. And so I, I, I think as, and as, as projects have gone through uptown, my staff, other businesses in the uptown, they've made adjustments as projects have evolved. Broad and Main, the streets improvements, we pick different places to park. We request our employees to park in certain locations because the retail businesses, they need their space, especially at certain times of day. So keep that in mind, that the whole uptown, as it evolves, attitudes around parking will continue to adjust. So I just wanted to add that little bit of my day, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I think, you know, so i- if you were to ask me what it would take for me to support this from a parking standpoint, it would be that, again, I, I think Grant was talking about, should we try to marry the length of this Farmer State parking lot to the length of our support that the city's given them of ten or twenty years? I've had that thought over the past week as we come to this session tonight as well. I, I do believe twenty years is way too long to try to re- request something. However, I don't think it is, I think it'd be worthy to basically request to add at least another, make it a ten-year lease, or you got your five-year lease with a five-year lease option. So to me, that is not too large of an ask, given the situation, given the importance of the project as it is, I think, to the people at Farmer State Bank as well. So again, I think there is a level in which I could certainly support it. But with a short-term lease, I don't think that gives the city and everybody else, I think that maybe the opportunity that might be needed to have other parking solutions. But if you give me a five-year lease, as you're talking about with this letter we received, with another five-year option, I would be fine with that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Your honor, to answer Randy's question, that was an agree, a repurchase agreement. So right now, we have that agreement with Marion Holdings. At the time we purchased, they have a right to repurchase if the city should either choose to sell the lot or to develop or construct on the lot. And it doesn't, from what I can tell, I'd have to spend a little bit more time reading the agreement. It doesn't look like it has a termination date in it. But it is not a lease, it's a repurchase.
Okay, thank you. I thought there was a purchase, an option for, I thought there was a first right of refusal on that. But perhaps, I know that contract had been written many times over before we actually signed off on that. So thank you for your research on that, and perhaps if that changes in the future, we can come back and just refresh our memory, thank you.
Dave, did you have any?
I do not.
Closing comments, everybody else? All right, well, then I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Bring this to our closed session. Mr. Sterned?
Yes, your honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters as permitted under sections twenty-one point five-one, I of the Code of Iowa.
I move in second to adjourn to closed session regarding personnel matters. Can you have the legal counsel statement, please?
Thank you, your honor, I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five, one, I.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Misskeman?
Yes.
Mayor Avolosli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, we're adjourned to a closed session.